Good evening, this is City of Pleasantville, City Council Working Evening. Today's date is August 21st, 2023, time is 6:30 PM. This meeting has been, uh, given the advertising, speaking of performance of media max, otherwise known as Sunshine Law, the vote call.
Jack and Ford.
President.
Can we wear our here? Present. Okay, we have five minutes.
Can I take a motion to the previous minutes?
Necessary motion.
All favor.
Aye.
By Senator. Uh, Mayor Kepa.
Yes, sir. Okay, we have an oath of office tonight, motion for, Ken. We, the state of New Jersey, County of Atlantic. I, Mr. Director. I.
I, Kendall Washington.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution.
And the Constitution.
Of the state of New Jersey.
Of the state of New Jersey.
That I will bear truth, faith, and allegiance.
That I will bear truth, faith, and allegiance.
To the same.
To the same.
And governments established.
And the governments established.
In the United States.
In the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
And that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
And partially.
And partially.
And justly perform.
And justly perform.
All the duties of the office.
All the duties of the office.
Of police.
Sorry, police sergeant.
With the city of Pleasantville.
For the city of Pleasantville.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
And help me out. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you. And continue to do this with your job, thank you, Ellen, we appreciate you.
Absolutely, thank you. I just want to say thank you to the mayor, thank you to the council, and thank you to everyone for this opportunity and coming out and supporting me. Um, I'll sit. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you for doing that.
Mayor.
I just want to say congratulations Sergeant Watson.
Thank you.
Seeing the great work in Atlanta.
Thank you. Thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations, you are proud of.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations, Sergeant.
Thank you so much.
This is diversity at its best, right?
Next up, we have two presentations. My in the emergency home will not be presented tonight, but go to the neighborhood revitalization tax credit program.
Okay. So next, the presentation is Enable Revitalization Tax Credit Program.
Commissioner there, responsible, I think you're the council president. Uh, just wanted to give you a quick update. The city and cooperation with the housing authority is about to apply for a million dollars. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Jim Ruttella, Ruttella Associates. And, uh, we're about to apply for a one million dollar grant for the Midtown Neighborhood, which, shown on this map, is basically the area west of Route 9. Uh, this is the neighborhood revitalization area beyond Main Street. Uh, includes, uh, the Lakes Bay area as well, all the way up to the Tresway. It's a large neighborhood throughout the city. The, uh, a group of volunteers in the city, along with the mayor and representation representatives of council, spent about a year putting together a plan for this neighborhood. The plan's been approved by the state, now we got the opportunity to apply for funding. Majority of the funding would go to Housing React for homeowners in the community, for to help small businesses, to help business facade improvements, to help new homeowners buy homes in Pleasantville. And, uh, this program is, is offered throughout the state of New Jersey in 33 different neighborhoods. This will be the first time that Pleasantville's applying. Um, and, uh, the, the hope is that, uh, our application will be approved, and then there's, there's a second stage to this. Basically, businesses have to buy what is called the story, or neighborhood revitalization tax credits. And basically, that is, uh, businesses, usually banks, um, in our case, New Jersey American Water Company has been very supportive, some small businesses, instead of paying their taxes to the state, corporate taxes to the state, they reassign those taxes to the neighborhood. Um, and, uh, we've been doing this now in other neighborhoods as well, it's been very successful. Uh, in Camden, there are six neighborhoods that receive funding through this program. In Atlantic City, there are four neighborhoods now that are receiving funding through this program. So it's a tried and true process. Reason I'm telling you this though, is we need your help. Um, the, the corporations, banks, businesses that work in Pleasantville, it would be great to get their support for this, and we have time. They really don't have to submit their applications until around Thanksgiving, and, uh, and we can help them. If you put us in contact with a person from, you know, a local bank, or, uh, one of the larger businesses in the area, we'd be happy to work through with them what the process is, and how they can get back to the community. You know, in Atlantic City, some of the businesses that have given back already, or Atlantic Fork Restaurant, Spencer's Gifts out here in, in downtown ship, uh, many of the banks, Ocean First Bank, Walton Bank, Wells Fargo Bank, and others. So, we have a good nucleus of groups, and the nice thing too is, they don't have to just apply, they don't just apply for one neighborhood, they have to enlist at least three neighborhoods. So what we do is, you know, we always encourage people to include Pleasantville in their list. So, it's a great opportunity, uh, we hope we're successful, we applied last year, didn't quite get, get past the finish line, but this year I think we have a better shot. Uh, the housing authority's been very helpful, uh, under the new leadership, and, uh, hopefully we can, we can pull this all together.
Yes, sir, please. You said west of Monroe?
Yep, uh, I'm sorry, east.
East of Monroe, okay, that's.
I'm sorry, I apologize.
I was hoping it was west of Monroe.
The next stop. Thank you so much.
Um, Jim, is this the same program that Duck Town passed?
Yes. Yep. Yeah, the same program exists in, now, the inlet, Midtown, Duck Town, and Chuffing, and Atlantic City.
You're saying a million dollars? And how much would be the biggest, like, if somebody needed a down payment for a house, first time home buyers, what kind of money are we talking about to that?
Usually, you know, up to $50,000. Um, and, uh, you know, it's really established by the community. The community really establishes through, and we establish nonprofit, uh, the Midtown Community Development Corporation. And once the funding's given, they'll work, that, that group will work with the city leadership, and with the housing authority, to come up with the rules, because every town's different. Uh, but, uh, you know, normally, you know, $30,000 to $50,000.
Change. Like, I, I guess you're saying the rules aren't established, but could this be something that, if the person gets the money for the down payment, they have to live in this house a certain amount of time?
It was technically, yeah. They always want to have, you know, you want it to be sustainable. Uh, so yes, and dollars, things can be, can be required. Same thing with businesses, uh, when businesses do facade improvements, you know, obviously they have to continue to stay in business, so those types of things, uh, so.
Yes, sir. I, I hear you said it's east of New Road, so what dictates that? I mean, is that something that you guys?
We had, uh, when we first started this, we had to establish a neighborhood, and historically, going back many years, there was a, an area of Midtown that was, that was, uh, it was neighborhood planning money that was used at the time for that area. So we used the same historic area, because that's what, just stated, was, was familiar with.
Well, the reason why I'm saying that, because I know that's how it was done in the past, so I was wondering, when do you want to go to the other side?
No, we want to make this one successful first.
That's something that we need.
We need a success here, and then we can go from there.
Alright, good. And I know, and I know your reputation is pretty quick, but it's important, so could you?
Sure, actually, the councilman was on our committee, so he knows a lot about it. Uh, we are now applying for the neighborhood revitalization tax credits this month, and, uh, we're doing everything we can to make sure we're successful. And certainly, your support and involvement is, is critical to making this happen, so that's why I wanted to come in and give you an update and answer any questions you have. Thank you.
Thanks, Hannah.
Thank you. Okay, uh, Senator, Senator Reilly.
First on the agenda is ordinance number 17, this is the second reading, authorizing the advance of real property located at 613 Conwood Avenue, also known as Block 342, Lot 1, in the city, to the Pleasantville Junior Golf Organization, a nonprofit corporation, for the sum of $1. Ordinance number 18, this is the first reading, amending chapter 208, here's six, entitled Rental Housing, in chapter 208, here's six, one, of the city code for let base pay inspections and registration requirements, fees, violations, and penalties for residential rental drop. Ordinance number 19, first reading, amending chapter 300, Article 2, entitled Land Management of the City Code. Resolution number 124, support from local government bodies, authorizing the submitted other application for the vehicle electrification incentive program, funded for the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection.
Um, sure, there's, uh, there's money out there under, with the stakeholders, uh, there are R-G-H-I programs, which is the regional greenhouse gas initiative program for municipalities to apply, uh, for electric vehicles. Um, so this is just a support document for the city of Pleasantville to apply, um, and we were focused on vehicles specifically for our department of service. So those vehicles and the number, and all of that has, has not been identified as of yet, but we are looking at, um, transitioning into, uh, the, the electric vehicles, and we're starting out with P-B-W.
Good question, we didn't, okay, we didn't say anything in reference to what I'm saying on, uh, a charging station for a public.
So, that's a, a, a previous grant that we did apply for, and we are working through that process, where there will be a charging station in our city hall parking lot, and also a charging station in our D-B-W. Um, and that was for a round of funding, I think, two years ago, that we're still working on, but because of the regs, it's a process for us to get through, um, that, to convert the vehicles over, et cetera, et cetera, but there will be a charging station eventually in our city hall parking lot for cities, and a revenue stream for public use as well.
Resolution number 125, authorizing the New Jersey Department of Community Affairs Grant for the Urban Enterprise Zone, the year 2024, administrated budget in an amount of $102,068. Resolution number 126, granting approval of a community event to Najib, Neshor, Nasser, August 25th, 2023, Hilton Avenue Bar Park, from 12:00 PM to 5:00 PM. Resolution number 127, granting approval of a family fund day to the Pleasantville Regular Democrats, August 26th, 2023, Max Main and Complex, 11:00 AM to 7:00 PM. Resolution number 128, granting approval for the Pleasantville AARP Shredding Community Event, September 30th, 2023, City Hall Parking Lot, 10:00 AM to 1:00 PM.
Yes, I get flyers, well, that even, I'm sure that all of you get copies, as well as the public, because that's a really nice event that AARP utilizes, and we, um, part, they partner with the city, so we do waive the application fee for them, um, and a lot of residents come out and get their island shredded, so this is a nice event.
Resolution number 129, endorsement and support of the New Jersey Department of Transportation, mid-block crossway pedestrian improvements. Resolution number 130, providing budget insertion into the 2023 budget. So, Resolution 129, who allows the, the mayor to comment on that side?
We had a conversation with this, uh, with the state, the railroad, they're coming down at Route 9, the bike path, we were not too old, there's some, lost everybody, a couple months ago, and they're gonna, um, do improvements there, there's gonna be a bar, right now, there's no bar, it comes down, if the, uh, trains coming, so there'll be a bar that comes down, and also, there's gonna be, instead of having to go straight across, there's gonna be a soft median in the middle, where you can go and stop in the middle, so, and, uh, the flashing lights, and do things on the side, I'm trying to describe it best I can, and then, do things on the side, uh, the side where the, uh, stone is, does everyone familiar with that, and how the stone is, yeah, so, they're gonna see with that out, and it's just, they're just gonna improve it completely, and, um, make it safer, but the bars are gonna mean a lot, to, the flashing lights.
Is that the only area that they're gonna do, but you do have, what is it, Delala Road also, that, that crosses, the track crosses?
Oh, okay, well, this is the only one that's.
It's just the only one?
Okay.
Yeah, so this is a statewide initiative, um, so they actually selected, when I say "they," NJDOT selected the areas a priority, um, and that intersection that the mayor just explained, of course, because of the fatalities that we had there, is a priority. Um, and, um, so they've done all the stats on that, and have verified that that's indeed a upgrade, uh, so there's other areas that will be down the pipeline, but this is a priority area. We won't see construction probably for another year or so, because they aren't doing it in conjunction with the other municipalities, they're doing all the bids at one time, so it's a, it's a timely process. Um, this resolution that we see before you today is for the state, for the municipality to support the state's, um, consulting for the project.
Any more questions? Say no, next.
Resolution number 130, providing a budget insertion into the 2023 budget.
Any questions? Say no, next.
Resolution number 131, authorizing the execution of an agreement with Brigetine Beach Development LLC, with regards to the Franklin Square Subdivision Project.
I, I'm just gonna just make, you know, if you want to just jump back to Resolution 130, the budget insertion for the 2023 budget, just make note, that's a $238,000 grant, um, that, that is under FEMA, uh, that will allow our fire department to, um, get up to date with all of this, uh, breathing equipment and respiratory equipment. Uh, that application was done by one of our firefighters, in-house firefighters, that worked on grants, and I just want to take the time to acknowledge that, and that that's a substantial amount, they were the lead applicant, won the application, um, and we were successful in getting the grant. Moving on to Resolution 131, the authorization and the execution of an agreement with Brigetine Beach Development LLC, as you all know, that's the unfinished development of what we consider Peterson Way, that started, um, many years ago, and unfortunately, due to the market, that project, uh, was not completed. We have a new developer, which is Brigetine Beach Development, that's coming in, who's being very assertive, and, um, investing a lot of money and energy into finishing the project. Um, this, uh, specific document was authored by our redevelopment attorney, and what it's, uh, asking council to do is authorize the ownership, uh, of the existing stormwater drainage, and what they consider a top lot, uh, to be owned by the city. Uh, the investor has already approved those areas, uh, there's other details within the document as it relates to, uh, maintenance costs and, uh, other issues, if there's, uh, anything else that our legal attorney would like to mention, um, that is in the document, but primarily, it's for the city to take ownership of the stormwater base, the drainage, and also the top lot that's not going to be developed by the new developer. I think there's gonna be 16 or 18 other homes that's gonna be underway in that area, and there'll be a completed, uh, redevelopment of single-family homes.
Any questions? Say no, next.
Resolution number 132, authorizing the submission of a request to the Urban Enterprise Zone Authority, to publish a request for proposals for professional services to develop a five-year plan.
Any questions?
So this is just a simple resolution asking for authorization from council for the city to go out for solicitation, for professionals to, uh, develop a five-year plan for the U-E-Z program. Um, so, we, we would hire someone to help us develop what that plan should look like for the city of Pleasantville.
U-E-Z is back.
It's back.
Any more questions, say no, next.
Resolution number 133, authorizing the city administrator to execute a treatment works approval permit application with the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection for certain projects. Next we have the bill list.
Good evening. Uh, we're going to build, uh, between this council meeting and this council meeting, you can see on the bottom of page one, there are really two big items, one of the payroll, $551,000, and then, uh, the county, uh, treasury transferred a million, oh, 96, into the county for their portion of, of the county taxes that we pay on four divisions. Uh, bills to be paid, you go on to, uh, page one, there are a couple here that we'll talk about, uh, going on. There are the $56,000 grant we got for firefighters, six or seven months ago, now we're starting to process and pay them. This is one of the items that, uh, is part of that grant for, for the fire department before their, before their match. Here at the bottom of page one, you'll see Barker Gelfin, uh, I hope you all got copies of thresholds bills, this is one of, one of three or four that are in this bill list. Uh, if you go to page two, fourth one down, is Bowman and Company, that is their third, third draw for the audit and, uh, work that they do regarding audit and the budget preparation. Uh, four or five down below, that's Comanico, that is the first payment, uh, for, in old term, like, streetscape, uh, I think, I went by there to tell you there weren't anybody working, so we're pretty close to being completed, so probably, next payment will probably be the final payment that, uh, will go up there. Two or three down, that's kind of fire safety, again, is additional information regarding that grant, this is for a specialized washer and dryer, to clean all their professional personal, uh, equipment, uh, safely and sanitarily. Top of page three, flash, and again, here's another one that we sent out, uh, their information on. Third, very bottom of the page three, again, another Mid-Atlantic portion of, for that grant. If we go over to page four, a little past halfway down, is the monthly payment for, to the school board for tax that we collect on their behalf. And then, if we go to page five, second one down, um, the next-to-layer payment for the Andy Boulevard Development, or with the Fousegate, and then, um, again, Mr. Crowby, invoices that were sent out, and their professional services backup. Any questions on any of these, because the rest of them are just normal operating procedures?
Next is the public portion, three of them in public, which is, which is one of the third items, one of the items, only, it's not the board, it's, 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 it's.
Hi, everyone. My name is Norma, eh, I live in here in Pleasantville, 23 years. My home is in the corner, in the Pleasant Avenue, in North Torax Street.
Now, this is a, excuse me, just before you get started, is it, is it an agenda item, some, one of the items that we talked about earlier?
No, I don't work, just.
You'll give, have another time for the mic. So, right, next.
For me, it's, alright, good. We, we, uh. In esta porción del proceso, simplemente es para todo lo que tenga que ver con la agenda. Si es algo que tiene que ver fuera de la agenda, entonces tendría que ser en una porción, a, a otro.
Excuse, excuse, there's something else, it has to be, so, we have the official tur, in terms of.
Oh, sorry.
I don't have a opportunity, nothing for me.
Yeah, next, the next, the next, the next.
Okay, okay.
We'll both just meet now, the next.
Okay, okay, okay.
Hey, next, there's a interpretive. We should have that.
I'd say most of the public portion.
You'll translate.
On the favor.
You have the record, she doesn't speak the language. You can say a word to her, she's really not speaking.
Right. Point taken, also, point taken.
Tell us, do you read?
Nothing at this. Nothing on this stuff.
I'd say most of the work session.
Motion.
Good evening, this is City of Pleasantville City Council regular meeting. Day's date is August 21st, 2023, time is 7:02 PM. This week has been duly advertised by the city's newspaper, The Horns, with the name of Public Meeting, otherwise known as the Sunshine of Law, so please stand for demokration and flags.
Davenport.
Present.
Here. Present.
Camona.
Present.
Korea.
Present.
Barclay. Sisram.
Present.
Sisram and Tim.
I'm answering the most, to dispense with the need, the most. Say, say, any more?
I have nothing else, thank you.
Ordinance number seventeen, this is the second reading, public care, Mr. Beal, authorizing the commands of real property located at 618 Fernwood Avenue, also known as Block 342, Lot 1, in the city, to the Pleasantville Junior Jokers Organization, a nonprofit corporation for the sum of $1.
Motion. Okay, this is the second reading.
Of your omega to public.
No, no, okay, this is the second reading, anyone from the public, which is the speaker on the seventh. Number one, I had to say, most of the public portion.
Motion.
Second. Take motion. I had to say, motion. Second. Sorry, sorry.
Davenport.
Yes.
Familar.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Camona.
Yes.
Korea.
Yes.
Sisram.
Yes.
Ordinance adopted. Next we have ordinance eighteen, that's the first reading. Amending Chapter 208, there's six entitled rental housing and Chapter 208, there's six one, of the city code for lead base paint inspections and registration requirements, fees, violations, and penalties for residential rental dwellings.
Do you wanna get a motion?
Motion.
Actually.
Second.
Davenport.
Yes.
Familar.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Camona.
Yes.
Korea.
Yes.
Sisram.
Yes.
Move to second reading. Next is ordinance nineteen. Ordinance nineteen, amended Chapter 300, Article 2, entitled Management of the City Code.
And second. Discussion.
Davenport.
Yes.
Familar.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Camona.
Yes.
Korea.
Yes.
Sisram.
Yes.
Move to second reading, on September six. Next, we have resolution number 124, support from local government bodies, authorizing the surrender of an application for the vehicle electrification incentive program funded by the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection.
Motion.
Second. Davenport.
Yes.
Familar.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Camona.
Yes.
Korea.
Yes.
Sisram.
Yes.
Resolution approved. Resolution number 125, authorizing the New Jersey Department of Community Affairs grant for the urban enterprise zone for the year 2024, administrator's budget in an amount of $102,068.
Motion.
Second.
Davenport.
Yes.
Familar.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Korea.
Yes.
I'm sorry, Camona.
Yes.
Korea.
Yes.
Sisram. Resolution approved. Resolution number 126, granting approval of a community event to Majid Batul Basur, August 25th, 2023, to Navarre Boulevard Park, from 12:00 PM to 5:00 PM.
Motion.
Second.
Davenport.
Yes.
Familar.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Camona.
Yes.
Korea.
Yes.
Sisram.
Yes.
Resolution approved. Resolution number 127, granting approval of a family fund aid to the Pleasantville Regular Democrats, August 26th, 2023, at the Max Manion Complex, from 11:00 AM to 7:00 PM.
Motion.
Davenport.
Wait, I'm sorry, discussion?
Discussion, please.
Yes, I just wanna put it on the record that the time is 12 to 3, and not 11:00 AM to 7:00 PM.
I'm sorry, what is the time? 12 to 3.
12 to 3. So you have approved the resolution with the necessary corrections.
So we accept the resolution with the necessary corrections. Yes.
Yes. Davenport.
Yes.
Familar.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Camona.
Yes.
Korea.
Yes.
Sisram.
Yes.
Resolution approved. Resolution number 128, granting approval. Okay, granting approval for the Pleasantville AARP Shredding Community Event, September 30th, 2023, City Hall Parking Lot, from 10:00 AM to 1:00 PM.
Motion. Second.
Davenport.
Yes.
Familar.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Camona.
Yes.
Korea.
Yes.
Sisram.
Yes.
Okay, resolution approved. Resolution number 129, endorsement and support of the New Jersey Department of Transportation, mid-block crosswalk pedestrian improvement.
Motion.
Second.
Davenport.
Yes.
Familar.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Camona.
Yes.
Korea.
Yes.
Sisram. Resolution approved. Resolution 130, providing a budget insertion into the 2023 budget.
Motion. Second.
Davenport.
Yes.
Familar.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Camona.
Yes.
Korea.
Yes.
Sisram.
Yes.
Resolution approved. Resolution number 131, authorizing the execution of an agreement with Brigetowne Beach Development LLC with regard to the Franklin Square Substituting Project.
Motion.
Second.
Davenport.
Yes.
Familar.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Camona.
Yes.
Korea.
Yes.
Sisram.
Yes.
Resolution approved. Resolution 132, authorizing the submission of requests to the Urban Enterprise Zone Authority to publish a request for proposals for professional services to develop a five-year plan.
Motion.
Second.
Davenport.
Yes.
Familar.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Camona.
Yes.
Korea.
Yes.
Sisram.
Yes.
Resolution approved. Resolution 133, authorizing the city administrator to execute a treatment works approval permit application with the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection for certain projects.
Motion.
Davenport.
Yes.
Familar.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Camona.
Yes.
Korea.
Yes.
Sisram.
Yes.
Resolution approved. I need a motion for the bill list.
Motion.
Second. Davenport.
Yes.
Familar.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Camona.
Yes.
Korea.
Yes.
Sisram.
Yes.
Next we have the public portion.
Next is the public portion, three ones from the public, which is.
I'm sorry to pass before, and my first time here, that is my name is Norma. I live in, in, in Pleasantville, Pleasant Avenue. Charles. Charles. I have problems in this street, the problem that people pass high speed. My home is in the corner, in the Pleasant Avenue, in North Torres Street. The problem, the people not respect, the stop sign in North Torres Street, in the Pleasant Avenue, go forty, speed forty-five, is my first time destroying my friends. My question is, I need you help, you put a one sign, stop sign for the Pleasant Avenue, in North Torres Street, for the people stop. I'm tired, people, the people not respect the speed. These people living in the next corner of my home too, and doing a lot of better. Too much people is driving is very high, maybe sixty, fifty, it's not fair, it's too much accident in time, and maybe in two months, three and four accident.
In some section, yes.
The people not make, not do the stop sign. I have a camera, the police go to my house, they watch it, it's like I have too much problem. In time, I start cleaning in the corner of my house, the accident, I, I scared, it's not fair. They need the respect, the speed, they don't respect. Please, I, the, the light, it's a street light, the turn light is off, please, I need the police, uh, light, please. Thank you.
All your, all your names are record, what's, what's your name?
Next, I'm, I'm.
Address?
225 Pleasant, Pleasant.
As well.
Same address.
What's your name?
She is my daughter.
Same.
Miss May, now that you got the light, if you get the address for it.
Yeah, so I heard you say that the light is out, right?
Yes.
Right, but where, which pole, like where, can you, can you, what address?
Same corner of North Third Street.
North Third? And Pleasant?
Yes.
Okay, we'll report that and get that taken care of for you. At any time thereafter, if there's a light out, there's a number on that pole, on the light pole, you can go right into our website and put that number in. It says public service, and you, you hit the public service button, and they'll tell you what to do, or if it's easier for you, you can call us, but we do need the light pole number, because right now I have to send someone out there to get the number, but we'll do that, okay? Because you took the time to come out tonight, we'll get the light pole number and get that reported to the electric company.
The question here is that since 2020, during the pandemic, we had at least five accidents in same corner, people don't respect the speed limits, there's not, like, no one stops, there's one accident that happened last week, my mom says, like, she cleans outside, but, you know, the yard and stuff, and she always, like, she has to be looking out because it's so there's too many accidents that happens in same corner. So, like, if we take your time to go, I don't know, send someone, for the stop, if you can put the stop sign there, or like a four-way stop sign, or a speed limit, where?
You could also go for the light pole, you could go on the internet and go to your electric company, and it'll show you a map, where you, you just put the address in where you're at, and it'll show you the map where all the poles at, and you just push the button, and it tells you, it'll mark it to that pole, and it'll go to the company, they'll come out the next day and go.
Okay, that's a little easier.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Sandra.
Thank you.
Have a great day.
One last thing.
Wait.
Counselor.
I was gonna say the same thing, Ms. Councilwoman Camona, you can't do it right on your phone, Atlantic City Electric, putting, I think it's reporting outage or light or something, you don't even need the number off of it, because they actually show you where they are on your street, and you can just hit it, because you can probably maneuver around there better than I, and I actually was able to do it for some streetlights, so it's, and that way, they, they get back to you personally. So it's very easy to do.
Thank you so much, guys.
Last, chief, yes, chief.
So your intersection right there, I'll go out there and take a look, perhaps my officers take a look, and make sure that the stop signs are in a location where they can be seen, because it sounds like you're saying they're going through the stop sign, or you're talking about when they're on Third Street there, or are you talking about coming down Pleasant?
On Third Street.
On Third Street, so I'll first look at that, and then as far as the speed goes, we'll try and get out there and try to reduce the speed by, as traffic enforcement in that area. Does that light?
No, not yet, okay.
Any more? Uh, Counsel, not the other.
Listen, a question's on, and we understand, just to have you, Pleasantville, New Jersey. I rise, all complimented, so relax. I have a question for our trade, certainty. The county lowered the taxes for two cents, and I asked them about it, they didn't want to know answers, that wasn't exactly about. He said, if this is a municipality. So, I'm just asking, how would that affect or help us? I know it's a tough question, but.
Where were the county charged list of?
They were charged this.
If, if they reduce the taxes again?
Well, that's what you said, that's what I read.
They're repotting, and as you may, as you heard, probably heard, we're paying a million, almost a million one in this quarter for the county for taxes for the purpose.
It will help us, yeah.
Yes, reduce tax rate.
Thank you for any part. The other end is, Mr. President, Sisstrom and great members of the city council, Pleasantville. The last meeting was quite lengthy, quite busy, so I didn't get a chance to compliment the planners and the voters of our national night out. It was a great night, great weather, and the participation of our legislators, from the mayor down to whatever, it was great, and I am indeed proud of you for that. And now we jump to the three by three basketball Saturday. Another great event, and at my age, you shouldn't shock me, but a young lady sitting on the city council went to their mic and said something about someone certain forty-nine years. I said, wait a minute, that must be me. I skipped the beat, Miss Thomas, call it, and I started to bring the flag, but I am grateful to all of you. The wording was just great, I have worked extremely hard.
And we are grateful for it.
For the upwards mobile, develop city, because Pleasantville is a statement you have, we are on the move, and there's a thumb on us, and we're going to prove to this county that we're number one. And I want to say to you legislators that leadership of my dear Judy Ward, you got hearing that from me already, because when, oh, I hear a noise. I want to go over just a little bit, but when you're complimenting, you should have to talk. So anyhow, Councilman Davenport, outstanding leadership job, and to all of you. You're going to have another event for our youngsters, the twenty-seventh, and I commend you for that, too. We're involving our young people, and our youth, as we know, are the future. So, to avoid, I personally, and the people I've spoken to, commend you guys for the jobs that you're doing, and I ask you to continue. One little source, we have a group called the Men of Pleasantville, who is chief is one. So, talked to a few guys, we had that little overpass problem. I get a funny feeling every time I go under the, underpass. I know my ministry is working on it, but we're prepared to produce the paint, that paint, to, to get the rust off of that overpass, really. I think our public works department in the city is clean, and, and when we hit that spot right there, it tears them apart. So, she's going to be talking to you, too, because if we have a meeting, we can get the paint. Railroads, I know from history, they do things very, very slow, and they run in high, if you try to get them on the phone, you've got to talk to five people. But Linda, my dear state administrator, I know you're working on it, and please continue. Thank you, and have a great evening.
Thank you, Camara.
Thank you.
Motion goes by the portion. More session, all in favor.
Bye.
Hi, well, I just want to thank you all for coming out today. Mr. Harmon, I have the same feeling every time I go through that overpass, so, trust me, we've been working on it, I just had a meeting with Ms. Big, Ms. Will, and I bring it up every so often. So, and to the public, thank you for your concerns, and thank you for coming out tonight.
Thank you, everybody from the public for coming out. I'd say congratulations to Mr. Washington, Sergeant Washington. Hope you do a good job, I know you're going to do a good job, welcome aboard, being a sergeant, everybody have a blessed night, stay safe.
Council President, and by the way, I also want to apologize real quick for being late today, jumped through hoops to be here today.
Council Davenport?
I just want to say congratulations to promotion, what's his name?
In Washington.
In Washington, it's Washington. But also, I just want to thank everybody here that helped participate in the three-on-three tournament, without you guys, it couldn't have been done, especially Public Works, I mean, Public Works really worked hard to get that job done, and I think they did a heck of a job, so, everyone up here, you know, we appreciate it, thank you guys so much, and I told the chief I had something to say to him. I didn't see you, boy. I didn't see you. So, I told you I had something for you. I'm sure.
I heard it was nice. I was out of town, you know, we talked about it before, but I did see some pictures, I was quite a bit.
But you had one also came through a couple times, so you came by and stayed a little bit.
It seemed like it was a nice event, I did those two pictures, that was on Facebook, Colleen.
George.
Yes. A bunch of pictures.
Great job.
Great event, so it's great, everybody was involved in that.
I attended the national night out, we had a neighborhood walk a couple weeks ago, where we walked through the city, the mayor and prosecutor's office, with police chief and Camona and his people, and we got, we walked five minutes down the street, and the first thing we ran into was somebody actually using one of those where you reach in and get some food that somebody leaves, and I think that's a great thing, it just shows that, like, there's a need for that some, in the city at a couple of different places. I mean, it wasn't, he just happened to be there, and it just showed us that there's a need for that. It went to the national night out, to the three-on-three, and this Southern Jersey Family Medical Center had their outing, and all three of those were so well attended by the community. National Night Out, of course, we ran out of food, this Southern Jersey Family Medical Center, they ran out of food, which tells you that there's a need for people that want to be part of the community, and I think that's something that we really need to keep up on these things with, to, to have, so that people are used to going to them, being part of the community, that they see us there, and that they can voice their opinions on things and have something to eat, because everybody's running out of food, it's just amazing that, like, even their food giveaway the other day, they ran out of food to give away. So, there's a need out there, and, and we want to respond to that and have everybody included in that, so it's all been very nice, but there's a need.
Councilwoman Thomas?
I want to say to Mary, congratulations on your new Joker House. And I'm wishing you all successful, and hopefully you all make it to the championship this season. Yes, we're doing it. And for all those who can, you know, come out and support our football team, our Jokers football team. I want to say congratulations to the recreation center for a successful summer camp this summer. I was there on the last day, they had, made about forty kids in attendance, and I just want to wish them, you know, I want to thank them for that, all of their hard work. And to you, Mr. Davenport, congratulations on successful, thrilled to be touring.
Thank you. And thank you guys for helping out so much, you, the mayor, she stayed, Joanne stayed to the end, and even Linda was cooking, so. It was a long day, but it was really, it's a long day.
And Mayor.
Okay. Good evening, everyone, I want to thank you for coming out, and Tamara, I know why you're here. Congratulations. And the Jokers have been having fish fries as fundraisers, so the next time that you hear them, again, they taste good, but they run out really quick, so, I'll be supporting you, I'll get there quicker, I mean, after next time. But Councilman Davenport, I want to say to you, you were saying about other parts of town that needs, you know, to be looked at.
Yes.
Needs to be addressed. What we're looking at now, talking about with the state, is Blackwood's Pike and Route Nine, as far as that left-hand turn. That left-hand turn has been a thorn in our side since forever, you know, so now we're looking at that, and it's going to be a couple of years coming, but the state, you know, we had a meeting last week, and they're looking to see just how they can do it, whether it's going to be a left-hand turn signal or how it's going to be, you know, designed, but that's forthcoming, so that'll be there. The other thing is, the dredging that we're going to have and the park that we're going to be building, the groundbreaking for the park, we've been talking to the governor's office, and they plan to come down, they plan, you know, to make visit, it was going to be before Lieutenant Governor passed, but then we first had the pact and we had to change it, you know, so, we'll be, they'll be more coming off. And congratulations on the three-on-three, it was a success, the day was beautiful, it's well-attended, and other events, the ones such as Councilwoman Fama Laro mentioned, you know, and they're well-attended, they're well-leaded, and continuity, that's what, you know, gets everybody coming back, they were well-attended, but it could be better attended, see what all of them have. And I think that is it, that's for today. Congratulations to Sergeant Washington, she'll do the chief enthusiast, everyone out. Evening.
Thank you.
Thank you, good evening to all, I did a lot of what's been said up here, and just a reminder for those that will be sitting on this recreation committee, to get those numbers up back to where they were pre-COVID for the, for the summer camp, so we remind, reminding you that they should, we should always have six trips, not three, and to just get back to where we're with those, because it's, it's a cheaper camp, it's for, for the kids that, 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 a lot of times, some, some families may not even get a chance to go on a family, go on a family trip, but, but that center and what we've been able to do for the kids there has been a blessing to this community as well. As well as Mr. Harmon, thank you for coming out, thank you for your support, thank the kind words that you always give us, I can't believe you're still in this struggle for all of these years, I always remind the public and remind anyone that, that you started this maybe two years after Dr. King was assassinated, and, and to be in this grind for such a long time, life takes its course during those times, so you're given just like everyone else, you have your ups, your downs, trials and tribulations, but Pleasantville's always been first for, as far as you're concerned, for us, and we're very, very proud of having this community, even though some, even though you're on with it sometimes. Thank you, sir, I appreciate it. I appreciate you, I appreciate you.
We appreciate it. I'd just like to invite everyone out, August thirty-first, at Woodland Avenue, we're having our Coalition for a Safe Community is having a community cookout, and I think, I don't have the flyer on it, but I think it's five to eight, it's five to eight P M, and just come out, it's just for a good time and promoting safety in our community. Everything is free.
And again, and again, Sergeant Washington, I urge you, chief, this is your home program, and some of the programs that we've been trying to make sure we have from, some cars that are from Pleasantville to help represent Pleasantville, thank you, Ken. With all that, let's say, let's say Pleasantville and entertain the Washington, Charlie.
Washington.
Favor?